City Council member.
Jody Katie, City Council member.
Ronnie Price, Mayor.
Homer, City Council member.
Phil Hamilton, City Council member.
Oh, Tim Berry, City Council member.
Bubu Cannon, Police Chief.
Rick Lanes, Director of Public Works and Utilities.
Julie Boyd, Interim Planning and Zoning Administrator.
Mike Roosevelt, Deputy Fire Chief.
Matt Kane, Director of Finance.
JT Klaus, City Attorney.
Dana Anshin, City Clerk.
Les Wang is Director of Community Development.
Jolene Graham, Assistant City Administrator.
All right, at this time, Stephen Bishop, Generation Church will lead us in invocation. My dear friend.
Happy for our prayers, just want to say it's an honor to be before you today. It's not often that you get a chance to pray over your city. And it's a humbling position. But if you'd just allow me to pray for you in this meeting, I'd be honored. Father, in the name of Jesus, we thank you for every member here that has taken the time and the sacrifice from their family to entreat you on how to orchestrate issues of this city. Well, your heart is for justice. Your heart is for the poor. Your heart is for unity in this city. And so, Lord, I pray these things over each one of them today. Lord, I thank you for the spirit of unity that's been released in this city even before the meeting, Lord, I heard laughter and joy, God, and we thank you for that. Lord, and I thank you that every need will be met for not just this city, but the churches, Father, and according to your riches and glory. Every need will be met, Lord, and we thank you for that. Lord, I speak healing over this city, Father, where there are things that are broken that we don't know about, but you do. Lord, just open the hearts of these city council members and see where the need is. And Lord, and just ask you, Father, because your word says that you're generous. And Lord, finally, in the book of James, it says, if we lack wisdom, that if we ask, Father, you give it liberally. So, Lord, I'm asking for a liberal dose of wisdom in this meeting today. We pray all these things in your precious name, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Stephen, you and I met six years ago, greater Andover days, right after the parade.
Yes, sir.
You were wearing a red shirt, and we've been friends ever since. Time goes fast, don't it, my man?
It does. You guys have done a great job. I've been a part of the witnessing of the meetings and even online, watching some of these meetings have been a little bit fiery. Do you know what? When swords clang together, there's sparks. And when you guys see that you work it out at the end, that's why I said you were laughing and you had your wisdom, that you have laughing and then there's wisdom in the room. I just, Lord, I just thank you for knitting them together. So, thank you for everything that you do. We are at Generation Church, we're continuing to pray for you. Amen.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
If you would, stand up and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tim, you gotta give the old man time to get up and get out of his chair and.
Stretch.
All right. At this time, I'll open the floor for a public forum. If you have anything you'd like to say, state your name and address, keep it short. I do believe this is the smallest audience we've had all summer long.
All summer.
Praise to God. All right, public forum's closed. Acceptance of agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to accept the agenda as presented.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Consent consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the consent agenda item seven point one through seven point three as presented.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Eight point one, Olson UDM Refresh Proposal, and Julie will speak to us about this tonight.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, our Unified Development Manual is a document that is part of the city code, and it contains, among other things, our subdivision regulations and our site plan regulations for development in the city. The idea with that was to separate it out of the pretty technical, you know, building code and make it a more digestible format so that developers and people living in the city can interpret the regulations in a way that's a little more plain English. We put into practice the current version of the UDM in 2018, and it has stayed, as far as I know, unmodified since it was adopted at that time. So, in seven years since, we have staff and some members of the development world and members of the public have become aware of some shortcomings with the UDM as it stands, since it has not been revised in all that time. There are some just kind of errors in it, some internal inconsistencies that we found over time, you know, tables might not match up across chapters, for example. And lately especially, in my tenure with the city, we have noticed a large number of variance cases going to the Board of Zoning Appeals every single month. There's multiple, and they are almost always approved whenever they go. I don't have the statistic off the top of my head, but I can think of only a couple that have not been, because we've kind of found those parts of the code that are very commonly accepted. So, seeing this, city staff put together an RFP RFQ earlier this summer, and we issued it on June the 17th of this year to find a consultant to work with us on a revision of the UDM, kind of calling it a refresh, since we don't really want to do away with the document, just bring it up to date. Unfortunately, in the time period for that RFP RFQ, did not get any responses that fit the document that we had sent out. So, city staff decided to kind of regroup and reach out to Olson, who we had worked with on our comprehensive plan that is currently in effect, and see if with some modified terms, they'd be interested in working with us, and they said that they would be. I do have an Olson representative here who can hopefully hear and talk to you all via Teams, and I'll let them add any other context.
Yes, I can answer you all. Good evening, everyone. My name is Abby Huchel. I am a consultant, planning consultant with Olson. I'm working out of the Kansas City office, and my background is in both comprehensive planning as well as working in zoning codes. So, I've done quite a few work with cities across our region in zoning and revising zoning codes throughout the years. And so, what working with staff on is developing really an approach to creating really a comprehensive assessment of the current code to identify things that could be kind of implemented and revised within the code in the short term, as well as opportunities for kind of longer term or areas of broader study that could be implemented. And so, this would be a project that really goes about six months, that would help us conducting a code review, as well as having some sessions for stakeholder engagement. So, we would host three in-person sessions where we would work with folks on some priority issues within the code and talk about some options for updating the code, try to build some consensus there, and then finally developing an implementation strategy. So, that would be called our full reports, outlining changes for the UDM as well as how that aligns with the comprehensive planning policy, and then identifying prioritization and phasing, so which changes could be implemented immediately through strategic amendments versus which ones could involve further study or even a phased adoption approach. So, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have tonight about this scope of work. And I know Olson is really excited about the opportunity to work with you all again following the comprehensive plan.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Abby, this is Mike Warrington, and I was just wondering if this was more of a format, just putting in a better, friendlier formats, or more, is it just more aligned, the ease of trying to get to what you're trying to find, and obviously code upgrades, but more of just a format?
So, with that, any code updates, there could be opportunities to improve the format. I think they mentioned that there could be tables where there's inconsistencies or opportunities to update the language, so it's more user-friendly and business-friendly for the development community that's utilizing that on a day-in basis. But there's also probably opportunities for more substantive changes that might involve looking, I know we've identified a few already, like looking at accessory structures, how those standards could be revised, and also just looking at how the code aligns with the values that have been adopted within the comprehensive plan. So, there could be things that are substantive, and there could be items that are revised that could be more about kind of how the document itself interfaces with those who are using it. I know another thing that we discussed, that's something for us to look at, is the site plan review process, and maybe that opportunities for improving the review process of just general site plan reviews.
Yes, so would that also involve in like checklist of this is what I need to do next if I'm trying to change from one zoning to the next, or what type of building or business I'm going to bring in, and it gives you possibly a checklist of what I need to do next?
Yeah, exactly. So, there could be things that are not necessarily changes within the UDM, but they're more about kind of just the user friendliness and the business friendliness of how the code interfaces with you all and with staff. So, if there's opportunities where you have a checklist or to the reforms to improve the process, that's something that we would also look at.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Abby, Paul Wimmer, I just had a question. I noticed on the reimbursable expenses, those are already anticipated as part of that $30,000 and some odd charge. Do we know what the projected reimbursable expenses are? And then, would I be correct to assume that if you guys didn't hit that, then we would get that money back? And/or if you guys went over, then would we be obviously continuing to add to that cost?
So, within the reimbursable expenses, what we're anticipating is basically auto mileage, and if there's overnight stays or rules for staff that are attending engagement sessions in person, so that's where that would come from. We would not charge you more if we ended up spending $2,000 for whatever reason. We would just manage that on our end, you know, within the firm. So, we will never pay or charge you, you know, beyond what you signed within the scope.
And if you guys come in under that, then is that reimbursed, or is that just part of the contract?
Let me double check that. That's a good question, and it would depend on what the specific contract says about that, but I can take a look at that and get that answer for you. I want to make sure it's the correct answer, but if that's what you would desire, we could make sure that that's within the language of the contract.
I would just be curious, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Of course, yeah.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the agreement with Olson Incorporated for professional services for the purpose of refreshing the City of Andover Unified Development Manual.
Second.
Abby, thank you very much for your time, we appreciate it.
Of course, thank you very much. You all have a great night.
You too.
Any further questions or discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one question. Julie or Les, in regards to the Unified Development Manual and kind of like what Mike said, you know, if we put a checklist in there, and then three years down the line, that checklist needs to change for whatever reason, will the UDM be able to be changed? And/or if that's the case, why hasn't it been changed in the last seven years? And speaking to the variances that you were talking about, Julie.
The UDM is adopted by ordinance. So, it's law that would have to be changed by ordinance. So, it's not really a living, breathing document, it's a snapshot. The checklist type of things that Mike referred to would not necessarily have to be a part of that ordinance document. Those could be more like staff forms that we use for a lot of other things that are just more of an assistance to the applicant, not necessarily the law.
To that point, I'm thinking off the top of my head, our site plan section does actually have a submittal checklist in the UDM. It just doesn't really get used, and it's very extensive and kind of hard to read. So, that is an area that we're kind of looking for, as Les said, moving it out of the code as it currently stands and into just being its own live document.
So, you can modify it and make it more friendly when you need to.
Right.
Yep.
And if I may add, that's all a really great point. Most of these that I've worked with are moving those sorts of checklists out of the ordinance itself and keeping it as a form, so it can be modified by staff, especially as technology has changed and people, the requirements that you might be asking for for site plans have been all different than it was 10 years ago. So, that's a thing that is quite common that we could look at doing as well.
Anyone else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Thank you again, Abby, appreciate it.
Thank you, have a great night.
Nine one, AI Policy, and Neil is going to speak to us about this. How are you tonight?
Doing well.
So, Mr. Mayor and Council, the AI policy before you this evening was written and designed by the city's AI team. The team worked very hard over the past six months to build a very specific policy that would address concerns and assure safety rails when city employees use AI. I do want to thank the governing body for the questions and the conversations we had last evening at the workshop. As directed by the governing body at last evening's workshop, we did make changes to the policy, and those have been noted in the agenda item. At this time, I would like to request acceptance of the policy, and we'll stand for any questions.
Anyone?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt the AI policy to be incorporated into the employee handbook as Section 14.11.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Nine two, Gov AI Purchasing, and again, Neil will answer any questions and talk to us about this, pardon me.
All right, Mayor and Council, again, at this point, we're requesting approval to designate Gov AI as the city's primary AI tool. Again, want to thank you for the discussion last night, it was very helpful. As you learned, Gov AI is tailored specifically for the public sector and for government use. It offers tailored solutions such as automatic redaction of PII information if accidentally input into the AI model, also ensures data security by keeping all of our data within our closed ecosystem, does not contribute that data back to the language model training, so everything stays in-house. If approved, this city solution will be available to all city employees tenant-wide. As the city grows, there's no cost increase, it just stays the same for however many employees we have. The total cost for this year is $19,250. That is divided into two payments, to be clear. $2750, $2,750 are for services from November to the end of this year. That will be covered, that will cover all of 2025, and that is covered by the 2025 budget. For '26, the amount is $16,500. That is also covered under the 2026 adopted budget that's already been accepted. The only thing to note on that, that I'd like to say, is that the $16,500 per year that rate has been locked in for the next four years if we choose to renew it. We're just doing a one-year contract right now, but if we want to renew, we're locked in at that for the next four annual renewals. At this point, I can answer any questions if you have them.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Coleman?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
That'll come back for a vote every year for that amount, just to approve that, or is that a staff approval?
Actually, that is a staff approval under the new purchasing policy. We can look at metrics, I'll report metrics from that, but the dollar amount as it stands for the next four years would be, as long as it was in the budget, would not need to come back to council.
Okay. If I remember right, that's below the approved amount we give staff to spend.
That is correct. Part of the reason for bringing to you tonight was just this is kind of our first venture into really designating an AI tool for employee use, and also to be just very transparent with the public with how we are utilizing AI. So, as part of the policy, it just made sense to also bring you this.
Neil, you mentioned metrics, and so you'd look at it after a year. So, if you look at it in a year and you see 20 regular users, how would you kind of evaluate whether that's a good investment of our money going forward?
Yeah, I haven't thought that far through. I think, I don't think it will be that minimal. If it is, I would probably go back and want to negotiate something differently with Gov AI and see if they want to, can adjust for that. They'll be able to see that metric as well, so they would probably want to be fair with us, I would assume.
Good question. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the subscription purchase of Gov AI located in Kitchener, Ontario, Canada, in the amount not to exceed $19,250, with a price guarantee upon renewal for four additional years, dependent upon future budget appropriation.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Neil, appreciate you, buddy. Butler County, 10-1, Butler County Wholesale Water Supply District feasibility study. And Jolene's going to talk just about that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a follow-up to your workshop item in February where we did discuss the water fund, and in addition to that, we discussed regional efforts in terms of water and supply. And at that point in time, you had given direction for staff to work with Butler County and the surrounding communities to update a study that was done in 2000 regarding a water supply from El Dorado. And so, after discussions with Butler County, led by county administrator Will Johnson, and in conjunction with a partnership of the cities of Augusta, Benton, El Dorado, and Tawanda, I present to you tonight this interlocal cost-sharing agreement for engineering services to be done by Black and Beach for an update of that study, with the hope being that it will provide updated data for the council to be able to make good, solid water decisions for the future of the City of Andover.
Jolene, was Rose Hill involved, or no?
No, they are not. I'm sorry. I did, they are involved, I'm sorry.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Is the cost just associated with the city's size or population of the?
So, the breakout of the cost was done by assessed valuation. That seemed to be a fair metric to divide the city split. Just also, for your knowledge, the county is paying a full $15,000 of the study.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I do.
Yes, sir.
I'm just going to call out, this is going to be money well spent while we currently have a water situation that's now somewhat rectified itself with Cheney being full. I don't know if anybody saw the article from about four hours ago, that the projected water rates for Wichita customers is expected to be substantially higher than was predicted, which is not a surprise to me, they have a lot of infrastructure they put in place, they have to pay for it. Rick, remind me, is our contract up next year, or is it the year after?
Julie may know the exact date, but I think we got a few more years.
We got a few more years.
It's probably prudent in the next few years to start talking about renewables.
Yeah, so we're trying to stay ahead of this curve, so when that contract negotiation comes up, that we don't get stuck with substantially larger rates, and so exploring all the options in terms of what we can do to access water is, the timing is right on this.
So, Jolene, are all these cities, the, well, us, Augusta, Benton, El Dorado, Rose Hill, and Tawanda, are they all on board, or are we just hoping that they're going to be on board?
You know, it's really interesting. When we come together as a group, it's fascinating to hear the different ways in which water is distributed to the different cities and the costs that they incur due to it. And to move to more of a county-wide wholesale water district would involve quite a lot of a shift. And, you know, in my mind, I really think about how it's almost would have to be a domino effect of sorts, like certain dominos have to fall in order for Tawanda to be able to join in in a wholesale district. So, my hope is that this study will highlight some of those challenges, it will highlight those opportunities, and it will give some solid data so that you know, and when the future council will know, when they make a decision regarding water for the City of Andover, that you are making an informed choice.
I guess my question is, are they all on board on paying their percentages?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That was my, I don't want to approve it tonight, and then Augusta's like, no, we don't, we're good, thank you, so, but.
Well, this agreement will go before each of the cities.
Right.
I mean, we all have to sign it for it to be effective.
Has anybody approved it yet?
That is a great question, and I have not heard back. All of the, most of the city administrators and managers and even our county administrator, they're at the conference, so.
So, just to be clear, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry. Is there a timeline of when the study will be available? How many months or whatever do they have to? Or have you given them, or y'all given them a approximate deadline?
I believe that is in the scope here. Let me see if I can locate it quickly for you.
While she's doing that, I want to say, we're a couple different animals, because Augusta gets dirty water and cleans it up for their people. So, it's just, it's a weird deal, and occasionally, most of my life, they send it to, they supply clean water to Malveen, but it's on and off lately, right, JT? So, I don't think they are right now. Is that correct? Or? Yeah, okay. It's, they've had a waterline issue, because it's older than Jesus. So, anyway, you ready, Jolene?
Yes, up to three months.
Okay.
Yeah, I saw that, I just wasn't sure if that was the actual deadline or not, how it was worded, so. But Black and Beach being a very large A&amp;E firm and very well-connected with doing lots of government work, and you said benefits, so I'm assuming that they can also provide potential funding grants, and not them, but know the source and how to do multi-large million dollars of government funding if that is needed, if that is an option that comes up?
It's not part of this, part of the scope. This scope is limited just to an update of that 2000 study. And, you know, hopefully at that point, then you would be able to decide if you, as a city, want to move forward with further exploration and commitments to that type of wholesale water district. And in that point, you would want to engage a contractor like Black and Beach to assist you through that process and navigating those financial commitments.
Maybe just to keep that in the back of everyone's heads, and of course, you guys on staff, you know, that can always just be a conversation, nothing that they're providing, but something that they might be looking forward to if this goes that direction.
So, I don't want to email the entire council, just so I don't blur any lines, but I sent you. So I don't, I don't want to email the entire council just to, so I don't blur any lines, but I sent you, maybe you, city staff that I went to that water board meeting of the water usage throughout the state. Could you pass that on to city council? And I see we have two candidates that are running for city council. I would encourage you to do a deep dive on water because the state of Kansas is in trouble with water. Even though we're getting all this rain, it's a Band-Aid. It's not a solution by any stretch of the imagination. And so unless, Les educated me on this, Eldorado Lake, while it's full and they advertise trying to get people to build their water, they can give you low-cost water. It's not a sustainable solution if we go into a three or four-year drought where Cheney has, has a offer that they can pull off, but it's not a lifetime solution either. So I would encourage you to, all the other issues we have, this is, this is what I believe to be the biggest, biggest problem for Kansas going forward. And so that's that. Had to be that. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the inter-local cost sharing agreement for engineering services between Butler County, Kansas, Andover, Augusta, Benton, Eldorado, Rose Hill and Tuwanda.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I, I just think it's great in regards to planning and, and like Phil and you said, that we've got stuff coming down the pipe. Tim, you know, mentioned the agreement, you know, coming up for a talk here in a couple of years. I, I think this is what Andover does, plan and research into it. And I, I think this will help tremendously.
Thank you. Anyone else? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. One more point. I happened to notice today that Senator Masterson was out in Western Kansas talking about water problems with the farmers out there as we speak. So it's a real deal. All right, public, public work purchase skid steer and Brian is going to come up and talk to us about this tonight.
I think I'll handle it. And then if Brian is expertise is needed, then.
It says right here, Brian.
He created the most.
Right here.
Agenda. That's probably what it says. That's probably my fault.
That's my error. Sorry.
He is here if you get any technical questions that are, go beyond my scope. So don't get too deep on technical. So this will be the second or third piece of equipment we bought using our scoring matrix. Some of you may recall that we created a scoring matrix that takes things like the operator rating into account, price, compliance of specifications and a set of things. And they, they weight the scores and they kick out a recommendation on where we should go instead of just taking the lowest bid. We're getting the lowest and best in this case, and we're having a basis for that, to do that. I feel like it's worked really well. You know, the staff, the operators that run the equipment get a chance to have some input into it. The pieces of equipment that we have bought, primarily I'm thinking of the articulating front-end loader. All the staffs are happy with it. It's amazing when you let them have some input and some, they have a lot more buy-in in it. And when you force it down their throat, sometimes they want to blame whoever made that choice. Not that our people do that, but I've seen it happen in other places. Anyway, just want to give a little background on that. The bids came in, the, the piece that was selected came in at seventy four thousand five hundred and seventy seven dollars. We had some decent trade-ins on it. We knew we would. Around the same, in recent times, the skid steer, that's a hand-me-down of a hand-me-down, just down at the street department, or the parks department that as they continue to grow, gets used a little bit more and more, is failing to a point where we're going to have some pretty big expense repairs on it. We identified funding that of twenty five thousand that could be pulled from the park equipment reserve. That's why we started that fund here a couple of years ago. So when things like this come up, we'd be prepared to take advantage and they will transfer back into the wastewater fund. Wastewater fund budgeted fifty thousand for this purchase because we knew we'd get a good decent trade-in. And we got the offer for the trade-in was higher than that. That tells you the piece of equipment is well worth the twenty five thousand. Parks would have to pay to buy that back, but we felt like that's the fairest way to handle that between the two funds, one being a utility fund and one being the general fund. It also, because this is a skid steer, it will, a track mass skid steer, it will be a good backup just in case something happens to the wastewater. So they could pull back and utilize it if needed. I really don't have much else to say other than it's within the budget, the way it's presented, it's within the budget. And I think everyone's pretty happy with the selection that's been brought to you for your guys' consideration and approval.
Anyone?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Just for clarification, Rick, we're getting a brand-new skid steer. We're not keeping the old one.
The old one is for the waste, Parks Department is going to contribute twenty five thousand towards it and they are going to keep that five-year-old machine. You know, we were looking at cycling them a little quicker so we could get a better trade, but however, we're looking at having to spend seven or eight thousand to keep a nineteen ninety-eight machine operational that we don't really feel like we want to do that. So the thought was, well, let's spend fifteen thousand more and get a really good machine in that department and we can reset the clock on that. But we, you know, we've kind of taken a little more aggressive stance on looking at when's the best time to trade some of these pieces of equipment off instead of operating to a point of failure like a lot of cities typically do. We're trying to avoid that. This machine was just old to start with when the Parks Department got it.
So they'll be sharing this now?
We'll have two. They'll have the existing one. The twenty twenty model will end up down at the Parks Department and the twenty twenty-five model, I'm assuming it'll be twenty-five, model will be down at the wastewater plant. Parks, Parks and wastewater.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move we accept the bid proposal from Murphy Tractor for a John Deere three twenty-five G track skid steer for the amount of seventy four thousand five seventy-seven and ninety-nine cents.
Second.
Jody. I'm, so, so the, what's the conversation here? I just want for this for the public really more than, more than us. Back in ninety-three, when Les was my boss and I worked out sewer plant, training Brian, or maybe he was training me. I can't remember. But we didn't share, we didn't share equipment. What was sewer plants was sewer plants and street departments, street departments. Now that Rick's been, been in charge and, and we share equipment so we don't have to be redundant in spending seventy thousand dollars for one to have a backhoe and the other one to have a backhoe. It is shared equipment, even though we're, we're not sharing this particular one because we have two. But if need be, they can use, anybody can use it, correct?
Yeah, I'd like to take credit for that, but that would be short-sighted. Our departmental managers are very good at working with each other and are willing to share equipment with each other. Maybe not always historically been this, but it is currently the practice and we strongly encourage it.
So I will take credit for it. And I'm the mayor. I take, so I take full responsibility for the good and bad, but thank you, Brian. You have anything you'd like to update us on the new expansion of the wastewater treatment plant?
You asked for this.
That boy turned red, man.
Huh? No, it's hot in here. Mr. Mayor and Council, so I would just say that to me, the company we're actually ha- that we have out there is doing a good job. They're rep work. They work through the rain. Most time they work today. They worked all last week, but they are on schedule even with all the rain we did have. But if anybody's seen pictures have been out there lately, there is a lot going on, a lot. So we're happy with them. Thanks. And they're real good to work with. We have meetings. Every Tuesday morning I have a meeting with them. So keep me in the loop. All subcontractors are in that meeting once a month. The engineers come out for a meeting. So it's been a really good experience so far.
All right. Thank you.
I would add upon that, just in case you didn't all catch that in my staff memo. I did put a link in there that takes you to some aerial photography of the plant that'll get updated about every two weeks. The ability to zoom in on that allows you to really see some fine detail. We take that with our drone. So about every two weeks, weather dependent.
Just so the public knows, Brian Walls is taking ownership of that wastewater treatment plant and saves this city thousands and thousands of dollars. And I appreciate it, buddy. All right, where were we at? Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero. Member items. And I'll start with Mr. Wimmer.
I've been threatened that we need to, you know, wrap it up. I can't get long-winded tonight. It's been a busy couple of weeks, but it's been a good couple of weeks. Appreciate everybody's support and the information, data and conversation we've all had. Otherwise, I'll yield the rest of my time to Councilman Warrington.
I have none tonight.
I just want to say happy National First Responders Day to our first responders. Thank you for all you do. Appreciate you guys very much.
I have nothing. Homer?
Halloween's going to be Friday. Make sure you're out there, make sure just like school district stuff, make sure you're watching for kids. They do slip in between those cars pretty easily. So make sure you're keeping an eye on that. And then next Tuesday is voting. Get out and vote. It matters in local elections. So do what you can and get out and vote. Thank you.
To build on what Homer said, advance voting in person, October thirty and thirty-first, twelve to seven, November first, nine to four. And then Election Day, Tuesday, November fourth, from seven AM to seven PM. And that's all I got.
So the early voting is, is Hope Community only?
Yep.
And the what day? Fourth?
Tuesday, fourth.
Fourth is that?
Week from today. Hope or St. Vincent. Hope or St. Vincent on election day.
Yeah, on the fourth. St. Vincent de Paul. And I think the line runs down to Central, but I'm not sure. Check your, check your, before you go vote, check, see where you're supposed to vote at.
I just have pretty much same thing. Happy Halloween. Be safe on Friday. That's all I got, Mr. Mayor.
There is a, I almost forgot, the chamber save Halloween from four to six trick-or-treat here in Central Park. So bring all the kids and all the costumes and come out. There'll be tons of fun and tons of stuff.
All right. Anybody on staff got something they want to share except for Matt?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. I'm sorry. This, this, most, men. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
I drew a blank.